Good evening. Thank you, President Wilkie. Members of the board, thanks for having us here tonight. First, I'd like to thank you all for having us here to talk about our progress, and I want to thank the team that's sitting next to me. We have Jill Council as our distance education coordinator, Carrie Jordan as our counselor, and we have the ISs here tonight. We have Ally Cadwell, we have Sarah Lobzinger, Cynthia Mills, and Rob Butler. So, thank you all for being here as well. We have four different subjects on your agenda, and I know we only have an hour, so if, I know we're probably the last school to go, and you've, you're fatigued at this kind of presentation by now, so if there's an area you want me to hover on or focus more on, we can do that. I figured I'd just hit some of the highlights real quick and then kind of run through it, save some time for the ISs to go over department goals, and then save time for you all to ask any questions. Is that okay? Okay, thank you. So, for the, some of the highlights for last year, we were really proud of some things that happened, and then we were very devastated by the star rating. So, I'd like to kind of show you, you know, what the state said we did great, and then how we ended up scoring on the NSPF, which was very much, like I said, shocking. Our graduation rate, of course, was the second highest in the school's history. It was eighty percent graduation. The year before that was even higher, and as you can see on that first page, it's got the years before that. Definitely one of our biggest highlights was the graduation rate. Master schedule, we're very proud of that. At Pioneer, students can earn eight point five to nine point five credits minimum per year, and some kids are, can go well above that. We added into the master schedule an advisory class, thirty minutes a day where we implement SEL curriculum, and three days a week, the teachers get that curriculum, and two days they have time for grade checks and other items needed. We also put our student announcements in that time, so we don't take away from the Advisory, also, kids will get point two-five credits per semester, so by the end of the year, they have another half credit that they can earn by doing this class. Thirty minutes of instructional time were added a few years ago in our, in our schedule, so our students start earlier and they end later than the other high school. We found our attendance actually went up when we made the date earlier, which was very much a surprise, and it goes against most research. So, we start at seven thirty-five, end at two fifteen, and we squeeze in another thirty minutes every day for interventions. We also utilize support classes and, for all of our core science, math, and English that students are scheduled for. Last year, the Nevada Department of Education invited Pioneer and awarded us for achievement as a highlighted school. They asked us to present in Las Vegas, and so I was unable to go, but I was able to send Carrie Jordan and Jill Council and Tanya Watts. Am I forgetting anybody? And they presented regarding our interventions and our achievement, and things that go on in our school, how we do our culture, and so I really appreciate their leadership on that. That was actually one of my goals last year and this year, is to really spread and develop leadership at the building, so I'm not having to, you want your, your staff to do that. So, I really appreciate these guys. Moving on, Carson Online has always been a really bright spot at Pioneer High School. We piloted the program several years ago. Every year, it gets bigger and bigger, and we're very proud that students are passing at a higher percentage rate than three other city, states nearby, according to our company, and it's got the data in front of you on the passing rate and course completion rate. So, special kudos go to Jill Council for all of her work on that. We have a survey every year called the SEL, Social and Emotional Survey, and our students consistently score higher than the state and district averages on how they feel safe and secure at Pioneer. One of our areas to, for growth is not surprising to us, and our students report that they pretty much get to where the bar is and they kind of stop. It's okay just to pass, is what they're reporting, which is something we're working on at our school. And they also have some areas that are low in feeling they can finish something and knowing what they want to do in the future. So, those are definitely consistent to who we're serving and an area we're working on. Our JAG program is the only, we're the only alternative school in the state that has JAG, and we're very proud of that. We're hoping that can, spreads over to Carson High. I think there was talk at some point. It is serving nine through twelve right now. We're going to move to a ten through twelve model, and JAG focuses on jobs for America's graduates. They do shadowing, they do resumes, they bring guest speakers in, and so it's a great program. A hundred percent of our JAG students graduated in their cohort, so that was something, we went from seventy-two to a hundred, to a hundred, I believe, in the last three years. So, JAG is really important to us. One of the markers that we look at every year is the pass, passing and fail ratio, and you have that graph in front of you. It's not easy to see, as I'm noticing in color here, but last year, the school hit a high ratio of seventy-eight percent of all kids were passing all classes. And so, the next marker in yellow was kids failing one class, and red, it was two classes or more. So, we went from seventy-four percent to sixty-eight, and last year was seventy-eight. CTE was another point that we're trying to develop. It's been there for about four or five years. Our students are getting recognized statewide each year. It's very small. It's in Health Information Management, but we're very proud of that progress. And of course, you guys have already heard about this campus improvements. You've probably seen reports already, we're really excited that we have two science rooms being built, CTE cafeteria, and a library innovation center, so we're really happy to get that rolling at the end of February. That will allow us to bring in about two-twenty in-seat capacity, and right now, we're sitting at one-sixty-seven enrolled at Pioneer today. For accreditation, Carson High and Pioneer both went through reaccreditation last year. We, it was a very new process to us, very different from years before, but our school, on an international average, they call it a network average, scored above the network average internationally. And they look at, you know, instruction, curriculum, every part of your school. We had nineteen surveys last year that we went through. Part of those were for accreditation. So, for the NSPF overview at this point, anything you want to ask or, so far, before I get into NSPF? Okay. Okay. So, what we do, what we did at Pioneer is, every Tuesday, we meet with our leadership team. We've been going over every aspect of the NSPF. We have a lot of support with our SST, which would be the ISs and Mrs. Kima, and Jeremy Lewis, and we meet together and we discuss, how can we, how can we work on this new rating system? Because almost every indicator last year went up for Pioneer, except for attendance. Attendance is still low for us, and our chronic absenteeism, it was fifty-two percent, as opposed to other schools. It was just off the chart. Right now, we're hovering at about thirteen percent, so we, we think we've done something to fix that, and we're hoping it doesn't go much higher. So, that would be a huge increase. But even with all those indicators, we knew we had to change things a little bit to play by the rules that are different now. And so, what we realized is we needed to have AP courses. We only have those online, so if you're not an online student, you, you don't really have access at Pioneer. So, we're working on art, and that would be for next year. We are already, for second semester, we've added CPD one-two-three, and that is a dual credit class, and the name of that class is escaping me right now, but I think Scott at the end of the table. Communications.
The CPD class?
Yeah.
Is that career exploration?
Thank you. So, that's brand-new for us, and so that will be a dual-credit option for our students to, to take advantage of. All right, for more for academic achievement and college career readiness, so we have our same interventions. We've added several different layers based on what we found. We have support classes for math, science, and ELA, and for ACT, we have one day of practice in online courses. It's pencil and paper. And for ACT, we learned that two days for our students who are, they miss a lot, was not enough time to get all of them in, and we lost nine points on the NSPF rating system. Even though our kids scored higher in math in every area than they did the previous year, nine points were lost because we didn't have one or two kids show up for ACT, and we only had two days to get them in. And one of those kids actually left in a meltdown, and we couldn't get her back. So, one or two kids can really affect us, and so this year, we're doing pencil and paper the two days, but we're also going to have the safety net of online ACT, which should give us six more days. So, we're hoping not to have that penalty again. Any questions so far? For ninth-grade sufficiency, we noticed last year that our freshmen, you know, obviously they have to have five credits per year. When you come to Pioneer in January with zero credits, our schedule was built for four point five per year. So, it was still higher, and that's great, but it's not great if you have zero and you're only going to get to four point five and you need five. So, we realized, when you come to us without any credits, you're going to get your minimum schedule, but we're going to build in a few extra to make sure we hit that five. And it's already happening, you know, this week, and last, we have new registration with kids with no credits. And guess what? We're going to take care of them, so that's what we have to do. With chronic absenteeism, like I said before, on your, you have a bar graph there. Last year, we ended up at fifty-two percent, and we are hovering between thirteen and The only differences on attendance this year so far, we are looking more at the chronic absenteeism and less at the average daily attendance, so we want to know exactly who's not here, what are we doing about it. The Safe School Professional is very, very helpful for us in that manner, Danielle Langham, so she's teaming up with our attendance person, and we have allocated more time with our attendance clerk for attendance, and so that drew away from Carson Online a little bit, but we're just putting the personnel where it's needed. Couple of differences, we have biweekly incentives. We had a local business giveaway, a hundred and twenty-dollar gift certificate, so we're making it a big deal for attendance, and it seems to be working so far. So, you got some last-minute information, and that was my fault. I was gone last week, but I appreciate Renee Cortez for getting that information to you. There's an ACT chart in there, if you want to know more about how we did and look through that. I also have all of our goals and action steps from our, our team are all in front of you. You guys can take a look at that if you have any questions. So, if you don't have anything else for me, I'm going to turn this over to our ISs for the nuts and bolts of how we're doing this for ACT in the classrooms. Any? No? Okay. And Carrie and Jill, would you like to say anything, since I monopolized the entire time?
You're good.
Okay.
Rob Butler, for the record. Good evening, everybody. Science, a couple of things new. I'm creating a lot of static here. One of the things over the summertime, Mr. Zona asked us if we could swap out a course, and so we took out geoscience and we added in environmental science, which, when you look at it for our long-term and how we look at things for curriculum and for, in our case, the ACT, I think it's a good move that he made by doing that. We had a lot of discussion at the beginning on if it was the right move or not, but when you start looking at where the areas that environmental science impacts, that we cover both life and earth and space science through that, and so we're going to hit more targets that'll help the students overall when they take their assessments. So, this year at Pioneer, we have environmental science, chemistry, and biology that we're focusing on. ACT score-wise, we scored three out of five star points there. Hold me up here closer. Okay. All right, three out of five on the star rating, and I'm still squeaking. In that scale rating there, we were at thirty-three point three percent, and the rating scale is thirty-three point one to thirty-eight point four. Looking at those numbers, if we looked at a one-to-two percent growth, we're still going to be in that three-star rating. And, so our goal here is, instead of thinking that we're going to move up and get another half point, which is what would happen if we, if we move into the next scale, is that we're going to focus on moving up higher into that scale. So, if you realistically think about a one-to-two-point growth, in two years, hopefully then we can move into the next skill area and gain an extra point there. And then, overall curriculum-wise, we talked about this last month here. Everything that we have, from our learning guides to our assessments, are all lined up with our Nevada academic standards, and it's important to understand that the science teachers at Pioneer are part of the team with the science teachers at Carson Highs. And so, everything we do aligns up straight across there. What's different is what they focus on with their students over there, and a big area for them is to look at how they can bring more ACT-style questions and, and techniques that they can work on with the students on a regular basis over there, and that's their big, one of their big focuses as, as teachers over there is, like in chemistry, they want, Mrs. Tyne Croft wants to focus more on having more labs in there that relate to what they're going to see, style of questions in there. And then, in biology, Mrs. Akerson was looking at more of how to consistently have something that will focus the students' attention on those type of style questions, and so that's how they're handling what's going on at Pioneer. Outside of that, any questions?
So, as, you know, there's a lot of talk about practicing for the ACT and doing five in five minutes, and, I don't know, a couple of different subject areas, we're doing like two questions, I don't know, if it was a week or a month or whatever it was. So, what are your results showing you so far this year with that work?
So, science, it's, it's different in that we're looking at how our questions are built and the lessons that we're teaching versus that we're doing individual practices. We have practice problems that they're setting up and that they, they can give to the students, that the, the ones that I have in there, I have some loaded into Mastery Connect that they can give, but the teachers also have their own style. So, that's what, we're doing it slightly different in the science in that they're looking at more focusing on how they're giving it throughout the units to get them the exposure of it versus doing a five-minute, five-problems drill thing. So, I don't have a direct answer for you on that.
Because as a former math teacher I worked with, I was assuming you were the math guy, and I'm remembering you were always the science guy, so I answered.
Well, my first question was why we're sitting here in the dark. I didn't get a chance to ask that question. But, that's not Rob's question. Rob, you kind of answered it for me. When we talk about the Nevada academic standards and, you know, what we're doing here at the district, I mean, I'm happy to hear that we're trying to figure out how we can cater our, our learning towards a test like the ACT when it's such a high stakes test for these kids. So, are you finding that, given the latitude we, we have, we have enough latitude? I'm afraid no. Are, are you finding we have enough latitude to make this adjustment so we can, you know, we, we can kind of key in, focus more on the types of questions the students need to be prepared for such a test? Or are we kind of, you know, hate to use the term in our own way, but, you know, does it allow us the flexibility to make those adjustments?
Are you talking individual teachers?
No, I'm talking just the, the system in general. I mean, when you're saying, one of your teachers or some of your teachers are trying to introduce different types of questions to the students, do we have time, do we have the time and the ability to, for teachers to be able to do that? Or is it really a struggle for the teachers to be able to revamp their curriculum, to focus more in science for the science questions on the ACT test?
Well, yeah, there's, there's time in there, because if you think about it more in, in, not as an additional thing you're going to do in your classroom, but just a change in how you're doing it, change in practice. And so, with one of our teachers there, a veteran teacher, Mrs. Akerson, she has that experience from, from her prior work of knowing how to bring different items into her classroom. And one of those is, you know, ability to then bring in, if she knows what type of questioning styles there are out there, then it's just a matter of shifting it and, and creating the time within her classroom to do that.
Okay. So, it's really, they can do it, it's just kind of a question of experience and, and time management?
I'd say time management is the biggest.
Okay. And you know, Jason, just, just still on, just in general, do you, do you have the ability to chat with the students or whatever to find out how many of these students, when you're talking about an ACT exam, are putting in the work outside of class, doing the practice ACTs and things like that, or, or the majority of the students just relying on the, you know, the, the education they're getting during the school day?
I can, but I think they weren't going to talk.
So, the question was, do our kids, I think, do they work on it after school, or do they know the importance of it? Is that what you're asking?
That's certainly what I'm asking. I'm just wondering if you have a sense, some statistics of, of, you know, we have X number of kids that are preparing for the ACT, which is, sorry, all of them is juniors, how many are preparing themselves outside of the school day? I don't know if you know that, but do you have a sense of?
I do have a sense. I have a sense that our students are not working on that after school. They, they're a captive audience, that's why we built more time into the day. Years ago, we tried some after-school programs for tutoring, and they just weren't coming, so we, we, we definitely utilize the time during the day to, to prepare them. And, so, the results that you were asking about, it goes back to the first question, how are we doing? The results from last year, none of the things we're doing now, we, we don't know yet.
Right.
But, but what we did different last year was, every week in October, kids were getting practice-style tests in their online as a built-in, and they did not like it at all. We had kids walking out of those even, and wondering why they're doing it, and so getting the attitude of, it's not just for college-bound, I mean, they, we really had to change some culture at Pioneer, we're still trying to change it, that it's important for many reasons to do well on that. One of the, one of the, my favorite things to talk about with a kid, when, when they don't see why ACT is important for them, is I, we say, well, if you don't do your best on math, we're going to think you need extra math, and you're not going to have an elective choice. So, I use that all the time, and, and other folks in our building use that as well. That seems to be the biggest thing that gets their attention, because they want to choose, they want to have some other choices, and so if you do the, the best you can, and you not just answer any question because you don't feel like you're going to college, that's, that's what's going on. And as far as outside of school, I don't see a lot of practice outside of school. The ISs are really helping with curriculum where students are getting that practice within the core, and I think the teachers do have time to do it if they manage it properly, but they're also getting it in those online courses. And, and I've already had complaints this year from students, why are we doing this again? I'm a ninth grader. Right, exactly. You'll be ready when you're a junior. So, that's what we're doing.
Just a question, because I saw that Carson High School offered, and sent out an email offering the students who are taking it to take an ACT boot camp for with, the weekend. Was that offered to Pioneer High School students as well?
Yeah, we, we heard about that, and I think that was the extra one we can, we can't charge any students at a Title I school, so we're going to have to figure out how we're going to cover that, but we definitely offered it, or we're going to advertise. I know, there was a recent meeting, I was, I was gone last week, but we'd also talked about possibly practice testing for the sophomores as a new thing for all sophomores, and well, we can get into that later as it's decided, or I might have missed it.
When I read your accreditation document, I noticed on page eleven in the conclusion narrative, on the second paragraph down, the last sentence, additionally, it was noted that there are some inconsistencies in monitoring and adjusting instruction to meet the needs of individual learners. I wonder how you've addressed that?
Yeah, the, I would say that that was not a surprise with that information. It, it's always, you want your teachers to differentiate for all the students they get in. We're definitely set up to do that with smaller classes. It used to be that we had multiple grades in one, one class, and now we've really tried to get to where there is a, you know, like Carson High, you have Algebra I, you have a geometry, Algebra II. They're not mixed like they were years ago, and, and with ongoing PD, professional development, we're addressing, you know, rigor and, and depth of knowledge, and differentiation is definitely, it's definitely on the radar. And I think, I, I don't do that alone. I mean, I see that across the district with the new hires, with Carrie Pryor. That's definitely something the new hires are, are hearing. They hear that with the ISs, so it's definitely a team, a team effort.
Because there was another, I think, on page eight, learners monitor their own learning progress or have mechanism whereby their learning progress is monitored, and I see you got a rating of a two point two-five out of four. I think that kind of ties into what we just talked about, right?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, you know, as we move towards the learner-centered model, it's not, you know, the lecture style of a college, and you want the kids to be talking more and, and being more involved in their education, and I, and I think it's, you know, having, being a past biology and chemistry teacher myself, you default back to delivering to the students, and you have all this information, and you don't let them talk enough, and so I still see that at times, but the teachers are doing it a lot better than in years past, and that's with the guidance of the, the district initiatives.
Okay. I think you asked my next, my next question was, is there a learner-centered model, you're using that, right?
We are.
Okay. Thank you.
So, are you ready for, we have math, or?
We changed up the order this time, so. Hi, Sarah Lobzinger, for the record. I am the math implementation specialist for Pioneer High. If you find the, the math sheet in your packet, I'll refer If you find the, the math sheet in your packet, I'll refer to that. And then on the second page, or it might be on the back, I've put examples of items we've put on the learning guides, ACT items we've put or embedded into our assessments. And then there's pieces of Mastery Connect where you'll see the ACT standards for reading and math as well. So basically, there's two math teachers at Pioneer High, stellar teachers. We just hired a new one this year and she is a very dedicated, outstanding math teacher and knows the subject very well. So there's Algebra I, Geometry Algebra II, Algebra II A and II B, and then support classes, and then there's also an 095, 096 class that we're teaching as well. So with those classes, they are all geared now for the ACT as well as the EOCs. And the ACT standards have been embedded in each of the curriculum maps for those courses as well. So one of the teachers has been adding ACT assess, well, both of them have been adding ACT assessments into Mastery Connect. So Mr. Walker was asking about evidence that the students are doing better. We have just now been putting those first assessments, so now when we assess again, we'll be able to see if there's improvement. The unit assessments that have the ACT items embedded, those are new assessments as well. So we don't really have data to kind of go back and show improvement yet, but that is coming. And then just back to Mr. Varner's question about differentiation, we've added the Alex program to Ms. Gingrich's classes, so she's using Alex as a tool to differentiate and meet the needs of each individual student, and those are in the Geometry classes and the Algebra II B classes. So that kind of hits a little bit about what you guys were asking. I will be visiting the classes in the next few weeks to talk about the new state policy. So if students, if they do not reach the ELA 18 score or the score of 22, then they will have to take at least six classes next year as seniors. So that may be a motivation as well. And then I should have started with this, I, I just wanted to answer some of your questions. But basically, our goal this year, last year, there were 14.2% of the students that, that were proficient on the ACT and scoring a 20 or higher. And the goal we've set is to increase that by 2%. And so we would have at least 16.2 students reaching the goal of 20 or higher on the ACT. I think with changes in the staff, I think our focus on ACT across the board, I, I think we will reach that goal. Any questions for me?
Hi, Cynthia Mills, for the record. I'm the ELA Implementation Specialist. And we've all really worked together to come up with goals for our teachers. I have two English teachers over at Pioneer, and both are doing a great job. One teacher teaches freshmen and sophomores, I mean, freshmen and juniors, and the other teacher teaches sophomores and seniors. So it's kind of a nice trade-off and they collaborate very well together. Basically, if you look at the English Mastery Connect sheet, it looks like this. I think it's kind of the easiest thing to read on here. One thing that we did was we subbed out the junior teachers and we looked at ACT practice tests. And we looked at the ACT standards and we went through each question and aligned them. So what you see here is when you see punctuation and conventions, organization, unity and cohesion, et cetera, you're seeing the ACT, these are the ACT standards. And so going through each question, we aligned them so that we could figure out what do the kids need the most support in. And, and for Pioneer, it's a little bit different than Carson, but, but there's some that are very similar. So we're finding that the punctuation is huge in the conventions and organization, and you can see the red there. And this is just one test, and again, we don't have the extra data yet. Teachers are next week giving the second assessment so that we can look and see, you know, are the kids improving? And if they're not, where do we need to go in and, you know, create some more opportunities for them to learn? So on the other side, you have the data per question. So you can go back and look at those questions. So it's not, it's a little more detailed that way because the way the ACT questions are written are not the way our teachers write tests. So they need, the students need a lot of practice in, in looking at these, these English questions that deal with so much with punctuation and organization. They're actually asked, they have to pick the correct answer, like, so if there's a sentence structure and it's punctuated a certain way, they have to look at four or five different examples and decide which one is punctuated correctly. So it's not just about knowing the rule, it's applying the rule, and it's difficult. So what we're also doing is, we're starting in sixth grade where we're really starting to say, this is a, you know, this, we need the vertical alignment, this is a systemic thing that we have to look at. There's no way in four months that the junior teachers can get the kids from point A to point Z, right? So, so it's a team effort. And, and so the middle school has, each grade level has embedded in their curriculum certain grammatical and punctuation, organization, et cetera, that we're tracking through benchmarks in Mastery Connect. And then we're going to revisit them every year because as we get stronger, those, those goals should go up. And that's, that's our, our plan, our hope. In terms of our overall percentage goals, if we reach our 2%, we can, English can actually gain a half a point with the star rating. And I think with the practice, again, I'm optimistic like Sarah that we can move up. And we are working very closely with Social Studies, and I'm going to hand it over to Ally in a second. So English is focused really on the English, but there's a whole reading section. And obviously, reading is a part of English, so it's not isolated in any means. And so, so Ally is working with her people and trying to up the rigor in the classrooms so that the students can handle the, the difficult reading on the ACT. Are there any questions for ELA?
Hi, I'm Ally Cadwell for Social Studies Implementation Specialist. And one thing, like Cindy was just saying, we've been focusing on the reading and the writing with the argumentative piece for ACT. With the new standards that we've got, which are very rigorous with the disciplinary skills, they sort of just lend themselves to the ACT as well. Sorry, I'm super congested. So we are exploring different strategies, instructional strategies to help teachers understand the disciplinary skills. And then how do you teach kids to get those skills so that they can use them and be independent in using those skills? And so a lot of our professional learning this past school year is on that and with our PDP. And then next year, we're already planning ahead on how we can support teachers with the instructional strategies to teach, how do you teach kids to ask compelling questions or to, you know, vet a source through, you know, different, what do other sources say about that source type thing? It's really complex. It's a totally different sort of level of rigor now. I will say the teachers at Pioneer are amazing and Daniel Etcheverria has been, he helped with all of the shifts and adjustments for world history in 10th grade. So he, and he has taken time to spiral all his skills through every single unit. It's very thoughtfully done, which is what we're doing 6 through 12. But he has spent countless hours, even during the summer, working on this and totally believes in it. And I think just him being in both subject areas in English and Social Studies, he's in such a great place with those kids at that age to really like bump kids to a different level that they maybe didn't even know they were capable of. And then Zach Logan over there in the other Social Studies teacher, he also, anytime you walk into his room, you'll probably see primary sources, different quotes, and he's got kids thinking about that, using them, and just having access to really difficult readings, you know, from historical readings or current events. And all of those things go to support the types of social science reading that you find on the ACT. So that's really where our focus has been for this year. With next year, with materials adoption, we'll be able to, also, I think it just frames like what, what kind of materials we're looking for, helps us as we're talking about those and, you know, completing rubrics to see how we like a textbook and that kind of thing. We kind of just have this really broad vision of the types of materials that would really fit what we're doing right now in Social Studies. And so that's kind of next year, along with those strategies and that kind of stuff. Any questions? I hope that made sense. Okay, thank you.
So we have, we have an amazing team of support. We've got great teachers doing, I mean, it's the best team I've ever had as an administrator. All the pieces are in place. We've shown growth, but we knew last year, it was a very odd year, I can tell you, because we did, you know, the best we could in, in years, on every measure, it was like growth, but then the reality check of, you're measured like a comprehensive high school, so what else can we build in? So we're going to learn the new game and, and we'll do what's right for kids. And I'm very, very optimistic. I heard Cynthia use that word, optimist. And we, we have the folks and they're, they're top-notch. And so we're, we're motivated and, and we'll get it done. Do y'all have any questions on any of?
I just want to say, you know, Pioneer serves a really important need for the community because kids who are not successful at Carson High School or are struggling in the middle school setting have an opportunity to be successful in secondary school. And so whereas you're rated like all of the other schools, and you know, when I was part of the Title I team at the State Department, we talked about this with schools like yours because oftentimes the requirements are such that it's really tough to, to pull yourself out of there. But I think that if you're putting the efforts in moving forward, but you also have to remember that you're also remediating students and giving them a foundation that they might be lacking. And so I think you have to be kind to yourselves and know that it's a tough job and it's an important job and I'm glad you're doing it. And eventually, those kids are going to be successful because of the hard work. And it might not be on the ACT this year or next year, but we're educating kids for life. And so, and I think that just an assessment isn't going to just show the true worth of what you're doing. So thank you for the hard work.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would concur with Mike. You know, and I think, you know, when you look at all schools, not just Pioneer, but you know, since we're kind of focusing right now on ACT, I think there's some successes to be seen just from this. If you look at, you know, I'll call it closing the gap, if you look at what the state's doing and what we're doing, the 17, 18 results, when you look at ACT scores, you know, they're a lot closer to the state average than what we were seeing in the years past. You know, probably the biggest example of that is when you look at reading, 17.6 versus 17.9, school versus state. And when you look at years prior to that, that gap's, you know, a little different, so the point spread's a little bit more. So, you know, I think we're doing some good things and we're starting to see some positive results and, you know, I, I am not an advocate, I am and I am not an advocate for teaching to test, but when you look at a high-stakes test like an ACT, you know, you kind of have to teach to that test to, to a degree, if you will. And I think, you know, blending that in with what we're trying to do with all the other requirements we have is an uphill battle. But it seems like to me, we're, we're on a slow but a good track. So I, I do appreciate what everybody's doing and I agree with you. You know, kudos to your team, it's a good team.
Thank you.
I'd just like to reiterate that. I've been to Pioneer quite a bit and actually was one of the surveys when they did accreditation. And the vibe there is just incredible. The teachers are all about the kids and the staff is. I think we forget that most, I don't, maybe you guys know the percentage, but I would bet about 75% of your kids come in credit deficient when they come in.
Or more.
More than that. So, so you have to overcome that where all these other comprehensive ones don't. And I think you guys have done an amazing job doing that and thinking out of the box and, and going out. I think the, the student engagement thing, we're actually on the star thing, they must not be testing the right thing because I've seen more student engagement at your school than I've seen at any other school. And the JAG program there is just incredible. And to see the support that the rest of the JAG chapters gave you guys at your induction ceremony was pretty incredible too. So I, we may, it may say on paper you're a one-star, but I don't think anybody on this board thinks you're a one-star school. We all think you guys are doing a great job and it's a thankless job. And you guys are doing a great job. And we would have lost 54 kids last year if it hadn't been for you guys not to get the diplomas. And you had quite a few millennial scholarship recipients too. So there's a lot of high achieving education going on at your school. So we do appreciate the hard work and the time that you guys put in. Anything else? Okay, well, we'll adjourn and we'll meet back here at 7 o'clock. Thank you guys for coming and we appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we're going to ahead and call this meeting back to order, and we're going to start off with number three, adoption of the agenda that has submitted for possible Motion by Mike, seconded by Joe, all those in favor? Oh, any public comment on the agenda? Seeing none. Vote again, I guess. All those in favor? Agenda is adopted as written. Number four, superintendent's report for information only, Mr. Stokes.
Thank you, President Wilkie, members of the board. I just have a few items of interest for you this evening. First off, we have changed the date of the Bond Oversight Committee. So it is scheduled now for January the twenty-fourth, so this coming Thursday at eleven-thirty, and that will be at the District Office Building. For those of you that might be attending this meeting for the first time, please note that we always agendize the meeting in such a way that it is permissible for all of the trustees to be there if you'd like to attend, so don't let that stop you. And we always have a little bit of lunch, so come at eleven-thirty and contribute to the conversation if you're able to attend. I also like to announce that on February the fourth, here at Carson High School, from six until eight PM, the staff is holding what they're calling an options night. And it's an opportunity for families of students, especially parents and guardians who have children who attend here, to learn more about Jump Start College, our EDU one-ten class, the AP programs, and any of the specialized programming that's offered here at Carson High School. And so it's a great place for information. If you have any parents who ask you about it, please invite them to contact Carson High School for more information. Yes, that is on February the fourth from six until eight PM, and it will be starting here in the library, just behind me. And lastly, I have been working since September with a group of engaged parents that have asked for the school district's support in bringing a gentleman to the school district as a special presenter. And so over two nights, starting with February the seventh at seven PM over at Carson Middle School in their gym cafeteria, not exactly sure what that room is called, but right there where they feed the students lunch, there'll be a gentleman who will be available to talk to parents first on the caution of how their students are using social media. In other words, what are those negative effects of using social media at too great of levels? And so the next day after the parent evening, and that starts again seven o'clock, February seventh at Carson Middle School, February the eighth, we'll be providing a student-based assembly to all of our secondary students. And again, the goal is to just encourage students to develop good practices and habits as it applies to the use of social media. It's, it's a concern for students who use social media to a great extent and they start believing that there's, that the real world looks like social media, where everybody's going to Hawaii or everybody has got a wonderful life that, where there are no problems. And so this gentleman's goal is to give families good opportunities to talk about the use of social media with their children, develop some good habits, and maybe even themselves as adults tone down their use so that it's not such a driver in their lives as well. And of course, some of the self-harm and suicide conditions that exist with our students will be addressed as this gentleman comes and makes his presentation. So I'd like to encourage you to attend if you're able to, and let other folks know that this event will be here to benefit our families. Trustee Crossman?
What type of publicity for these events are going to be sent to the parents to let them know ahead of time because that's right around the corner? Are there going to be, I'm guessing it could be a flyer in all peachies even for elementary parents, or are we focusing mainly on secondary parents?
I know that the group that I've been working with has been developing the flyer, and we have offered all of those options to them as a way for them to get the word out. We also have through Dan Davis's office, a, a very well-connected group that reaches out to about twenty thousand people here in town, and so we'll put out a press release that allows that information to go out to that group.
Mr. Stokes, would there be a bilingual representative providing the session in Spanish?
That's a great suggestion, and I am certain that we can make that happen.
Thank you.
Madam President, that's my report, unless you have any questions for me?
Any other questions for Mr. Stokes? Seeing none, moving on to number five, board reports. Carson, we'll start with Carson High is not here, so Casey for Pioneer.
Hello there, my name is Casey Beaufort and I'm, I'm the representative for Pioneer High School. Pioneer High School hopes everyone enjoyed the holiday yesterday and took time to think about the examples set for us by Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. There's an early release day on Monday, January twenty-eighth. On January thirtieth, there is a Project Discovery ski trip. On Friday, February first, there is a Rock Sport field trip. Monday, February fourth, is Staff Professional Development Day. Congratulations to our, our seniors in the spotlight for the month of January, Angel Chavez. He has worked hard at Pioneer High School and has a bright future ahead. That's all.
I have a board report for Board Book Bray. On January twenty-fifth, they're having their sports dress-up day for staff and students. And this week, they're doing their access testing for EL learners for grades one through five. They had to cancel that last week due to the weather, so they're holding it this week. And on the fourth grade, NAEP, the National Assessment of Educational Progress Testing, will be administered on January thirty-first. Also, Board Book Bray's STEM coach, Rachel Croft, was awarded a Carson City School Foundation mini-grant to lead a book club with a science emphasis. What she's doing, she's buying science books and she's going to give those books out to different students who apply to receive them. They would also like to welcome anyone from the community or the school board to attend the STEM Book Club. They're holding on February twenty-eighth at five-thirty PM. The Academic Parent Teacher Team Meeting will be held Thursday, five-thirty, seven-thirty, and they have nine teachers who are participating in that program. And on February fifth, PTA Meeting is going to be held at three-thirty PM in the library. And I did make a mistake, the access testing was not canceled last week, they're just holding it this week. It was the APTP conferences that were rescheduled.
Okay, and this is a Monday on a Tuesday, so I don't have a board report for Fringe because I was a little behind on that, but I do have for Fremont, they are beginning their SSA decision-making in February again, so if any parents are interested in serving on that committee there, to contact the office staff and let them know. And for the Nevada Association of School Boards, don't forget that this Saturday is professional development and part of continuation of the orientation training required in your first and third year of your term, and that will be at the Hyatt in Reno beginning at eight-thirty. So that's all I have for now.
I have no announcements.
Just a few for Carson High, and I'll save that one that you have. Anyone interested in being a part of Mr. Carson High, you can contact the athletics office or the nurses' office to get some information. HOSA is having a blanket drive that they're going to donate blankets they collect to the homeless, and you can donate, you can drop off your donated blankets in Mrs. Gustafson's room, which is room, is it twenty? I think, I'm sure we can figure that out if we get it here. January twenty-second, well, basically today through February fourteenth. And then Winterfest voting is happening today through the end of January, and you can vote on Edmodo. That's all I had for today. I guess I'll say that today, several of us on the board had the opportunity to, we got invited to attend a CTE presentation, if you will, and tour, so we got to see the, you know, a couple of the engineering classrooms, manufacturing, I'm drawing a blank on where all we went.
Engineering.
Yeah, engineering.
IT essentials.
Right, IT, robotics. So it was interesting, I've done some of that before, but it's always nice to see the changes year to year that are going on. Before we did the tour, we chatted about all the programs, you know, everything from HOSA to culinary to, you know, and, and what's nice is we're seeing just an increase in offerings every year, you know, related to, to CTE. So, you know, I think the staff here is just doing a great job of constantly finding innovative ways to increase and improve all these programs. So that's my report.
I have another Carson High School, just announcement and maybe an invitation to anyone, right here tomorrow, from four, four-thirty to eight PM, the Carson High School Robotics Team is actually hosting a, the last meet or tournament of, of Northern Nevada's year right here in Car, in Senator Square here. And just a little bit about the robotics team, they follow a national program called the First Tech Challenge, and where in August, they release basically a challenge to the, to the country, and in August and September, you build, you program, you put together your robots, and then starting November, December, and January, you have various meets where the robots compete in a ten-foot by ten-foot kind of square field, and they compete against each other and, and for, for points on various tasks. So if you're interested and want to see that tomorrow night, it'll be right here. I'll be selling concessions. And anyway, you're all invited, it's open to the public.
So last night, the Food for Thought Board of Directors had their first meeting of the year. Carson City partners with them, they provide, we provide backpack program for students who have food insecurities. Carson City School District is actually well-represented on the board. I'm currently serving as the president. Our attorney, Mike Pavlakis, is on the Board of Directors, and the librarian here at Carson High School, Ananda Campbell, is also one of the directors. And each month, we highlight one item which we will be providing to students, and this month, we're asking the community to donate fruit cups packed in fruit juice. So if you are so inclined, we'd appreciate any contributions.
Thank you, Mike. Moving on to number six, association reports for discussion only. Seeing none, we'll move on to number seven, public comment. This is a time where the public, members of the public can comment on matters that are within the authority of the board that are not on the agenda. Please limit your comments to three minutes, and we have one sign up. We have Scott Morrison, VP Academics and Student Activities, WNC. Welcome, Scott. Please state your name for the record.
Thank you very much. Scott Morrison for the record, Vice President of Academic and Student Affairs from Western Nevada College. And I wanted to offer the board a quick update on dual enrollment partnerships between Carson City School District Institutions and Western Nevada College. I've been involved with dual credit with WNC since 2013, and in fact, Carson City School District and Carson, Carson High School has led the way in a lot of ways with building models for the rest of the state. The Jump Start Program, which now just about every school in the state has some version of, was developed right here in this building under the guidance of Sukima, and so thank you again for your continued partnership there. It's been really kind of a history of building together, growing together, struggling together, and, and really finding great opportunities for students. The original discussion in this building that led to Jump Start College was really focused on finding ways to help students who graduate from high school avoid entering developmental classes when they start college. We saw large numbers of students do that. Oftentimes, it, it was seen as a difficulty, a pipeline of developmental education, and a leaky pipeline where students would typically not continue to degree completion. And we found lots of creative ways, and we continue to find ways to, to work toward, toward repairing that and offering really good, strong pathways for students. So on a short timeline, this spring nineteen semester, which started for WNC today, there's some novel new ways that the Carson City School District, Pioneer High School, and Carson High School are both developing to help students. And President Zona mentioned earlier, a math ninety-six class and a CPD class. We have these, what we'll call transitions classes, offered with Carson High School and Pioneer High School, starting with the spring nineteen semester, where students are co-enrolled in high school math classes, but they're also WNC transitions classes, math ninety-six, English ninety-eight, and also a college transfer elective course at Pioneer High School called CPD one-twenty-three, which is a career explorations class. So these classes offer students a lot of different opportunities. One is they get formally connected to a post-secondary institution, and for seniors in high school, that, that gap that exists after high school graduation before they make a connection with a college can be kind of a dangerous gap where maybe they don't, they don't cover it, they don't get connected with second, post-secondary education. This helps fill that in, they have at least some connection. Secondly, when students pass a developmental course or a transitions course with WNC, and they're formally enrolled, they have some documentation that they took this at the college level that they could take to another school. Sometimes we've, in the past, we've developed agreements with school districts that, that allowed them to, to share curriculum and take a class that WNC would recognize, but this actually allows them to, to take a course and have coursework that is recognized at UNR, UNLV, Nevada State College, TMCC, and elsewhere. So it really, really kind of fills in that gap for them. The CPD class is, is a terrific one because it actually does count toward a bachelor's degree. It's elective credit, but it's at the transfer level, so it's a great opportunity for students. Pioneer High School has twelve students enrolled in that class for the spring semester. Ten of those students are also Nevada Promise applicants, which gives them an extra connection with WNC. So that, whether or not they stay with WNC next year, it really gives them a terrific connection and support that can help them kind of continue on if that's what they wish to do. I want to wrap up with just a few numbers for you. So with Carson High School, we have eighty-four students who have this opportunity for the English transition classes for spring, and a hundred and nineteen students who have this opportunity for the math transitions course for spring. So the numbers are really there, and, and what it's going to take is for us to have those clear mechanisms by which the students learn about these opportunities. Our Jump Start Program is still thriving within, with all of our partnerships. Carson High School has twenty-eight first-year students this year and twenty second-year students who are on track to graduate with their associate's degrees a week or so before they graduate from high school. So let me say that one more time, twenty. So let me say that one more time, 20 students who are on track to graduate with associate's degrees as they graduate from high school, which is really an achievement. So I want to close by just saying thank you to Carson City School District for their, their leadership and partnership. We have great partners in Carson High School and Pioneer High School, and we see lots of reasons to be optimistic. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. We appreciate the partnership, too. Thank you for all your hard work, too.
Happy to come back and answer any questions anytime. I'll try to come back periodically and offer updates with public comment, but happy to participate in presentations as well.
Great. We may see you on a future agenda, then.
Thanks.
Thank you for the information, Scott. Moving on to item eight, informational update on the two-year action plan for the Western Safe Routes to Schools Program. Ms. Moffett.
Good evening, Madam President and the Board. My name is Carissa Moffett. I'm the Bicycle and Pedestrian Coordinator for Public Works. I oversee and implement the Safe Routes to School program in four counties, Carson City, Douglas County, Lyon County, and also Story County. So thank you for having me here today. I just wanted to introduce myself to all of you and let you know that if there are any other, if there are any ever school-related concerns, you can shoot me an email or give me a call. My email is KMOFETT@carson.org. So, I just wanted to talk to you about the action plan, which you actually have in one of your pamphlets, and to solicit some feedback on those action plans. So this action plan is actually going to the Regional Transportation Commission Board next month, so I would love for your feedback and to incorporate any comments that you might have on it. So just giving you a brief overview, the mission of the Western Nevada Safe Routes to School program is to improve safety and well-being of students, families, and school officials traveling to and from school by foot, bicycle, and other active modes of transportation. It started in 2009 through a federal grant by the Nevada Department of Transportation, and today we have Albert with us, who oversees the state Bicycle and Pedestrian Program. So this program is important because of the children of, the percentage of children who walk and bike to school has dropped from 48% in 1969 to 13% in 2009, and that's a national statistic. In Carson City, we did a survey in 2015, and in Carson City, about 25% of kids walk, bike, or take another active mode of transportation to school. And so with this update of the action plan, I'm hoping to get another recount for 2018, 2019, and 2020, to see how many kids are still walking and biking to school, but also to see where we might need some safety infrastructure improvements. So I think it's important to focus on these things, especially in a city that's growing up, to see where we might need these safety infrastructure improvements in our school zones and also where school, where youth are present. So this program uses six effective strategies to increase the amount of youth walking to school and reduce injuries. And these six strategies are education, encouragement, engineering, enforcement, evaluation, and equity, and you can find that inside this action plan, and I encourage you to read about them. And so these strategies work together with program goals to meet the Western Nevada Safe Routes to School mission. The first goal is building a coalition of champions, community partners such as yourself, and advocates to grow the program. Goal two is utilizing nationwide best practices and data to drive our decisions to prove safety on our streets and roads near schools. Goal three is measuring the successes of our comprehensive approach by tracking benchmarks of performance measures. And I'll go through a little bit with this with you. If you turn to page 11 of the action plan, from 2018 to 2020, our focus is, as mentioned, improving safety within the walk zone of schools, and widening, widening the variety of safe routes projects to the following. Coordinate with law enforcement and crossing guard programs, which, working very closely with law enforcement to increase collaboration and work together to improve safety solutions. Lead physical education teacher trainings and community workshops to provide youth and adults with the skills and education on how to walk and bike safely. Expand and develop champions programs to be a liaison to enhance the Safe Routes to School program at their respective schools. Celebrate Walk to School Day, Bike to School Day, and Nevada Moves Day to increase community cohesion and generate enthusiasm and increase walking and bicycling. And lastly, develop community travel safety plans to assess where physical infrastructure improvements are needed to make active transportation safer and more convenient. And I think this last one is extremely important because when coupled with education, when you make physical improvements or an infrastructure, it gives people the confidence and the convenience to walk and bike to school or to scooter whatever active mode of transportation that you take. And so, just today, we were just approved for our travel safety plan, so we're hoping to look at each school holistically and see what type of safety measures we can take, so we will look at like, just asset management of where the crosswalks are, where crossing guards are, where traffic signals, pedestrian signals, where bike racks are located, how does the parent pickup carpool look like, what does the bus loop look like, and then looking at all these factors and making more informed decisions on how to improve our school zones. And then page 13 through 17 demonstrates how each of these projects meets each one of these six Es, and how each action item will be measured quarterly to track progress in the two-year cycle. And that was my brief overview of the action plan, and I'm happy to take any comments.
I was just wondering, I pick up my granddaughter from Bordegg Bray every day, and I see traffic well exceeding the speed limit through that zone all the time. I also see people making U-turns in the middle of the street to grab a parking spot, and I believe it's now illegal to make a U-turn in a school zone, if I'm not mistaken. And I'm just wondering if there's anything you can do as educational-wise, maybe put out press releases to remind people, and also seeing parking in the red zone in front of the fire hydrant all the time every day. So I don't know if there's anything press-wise or educational-wise that you could do to remind probably everybody in all the school zones about, slow down and just be more cautious, really, because I'm really afraid that someone's going to get hurt. The crossing guard there does a terrific job. I mean, he hollers at people, and tells them, "Slow down," all the time, but most people don't pay attention.
Thank you. I definitely agree with the need to increase education, especially with motorists and parents dropping their kids off to school. So there are a few different strategies we can take with this, which is why I think it's important to coordinate with the school district and SEER, and law enforcement and NDOT. I know they go out and actually patrol the school zones and give tickets, so I'd like to see more of that, more of that enforcement, and you'll, enforcement is one of the Es, and so I'm hoping to kind of pick up speed and momentum on that. Another thing is the travel safety plan, so the planning consultant will reach out to people at each school individually and talk and interview a host of people, and so incorporating those comments into the plan. And the purpose of the plan is to give us teeth to make these types of improvements. So whether it's a rectangular rapid flashing beacon on the street to slow cars down, or to put an additional crossing guard, just making informed decisions on what we can do best to approach that problem.
Speaking of flashing zones, you know how Carson has put those pedestrian walkway, where they really flash really well? Would there be any funding to do that in some of the school zones, to make it a little bit more recognizable, draw people's attention to it? Because Bordegg Bray has one on King Street there, but it's just a small sign as most school, school zones, I think, have, and like I said, I don't believe people really see it, or they don't pay attention to it, but you really notice them on Carson, on Main Street there now, when somebody's in the pedestrian walkway.
Yeah, I agree, and I think RFBs work really well to alert motorists that vulnerable people, kids, youth, anyone who's walking just can't compete against a car, so I think they're very functional. And that's, I'm going to go back to the travel safety plan, that will definitely give us teeth and be able to prioritize where to put these types of infrastructure. It is public work, so we do have funding to work with to make these types of infrastructure improvements, so.
Okay, and my comment kind of follows along with that, because I know for Fritsch Elementary School, some of the walk zone is actually, the boundaries for the school includes areas east of Carson Street, so it's a bigger road that some of the kids have to cross, and so looking at where to place those flashing pedestrian lights. I've seen kids across Bath Street, going across Carson Street at Bath Street, where there's just not very much there. I know there's a light down at Long Street, but they tend not to go down and take the light to do it, but that, just to look into areas along the routes where they have to cross the bigger road would be beneficial, I think.
Yeah, I agree, and this definitely won't be the first time that you guys see me. Sorry, I was a little nervous. At the school zones is definitely something that we're looking into. They have not been overhauled since 1992 or amended, and so that's something that the school district and I were looking into improving. So we're looking at extending some of the school zones and revamping the signs, just taking a whole inventory of where they currently are, what do the times say? So you'll hear more about that in the upcoming months. So I really appreciate that comment, and we'll definitely incorporate it.
Yeah, first of all, thanks for being here.
Thank you for having me.
Just two thoughts I have. When we talk about safe routes to school, and I agree with everything we're talking about, the flashing lights and all that, has there been, has Public Works, Carson City Public Works been involved? I know it's a, it's a bigger, it's a bigger expense, but when we look at safe routes to school, everything from sidewalks and curbs, you know, we've got a lot of old infrastructure in town, and it's not uncommon to see, you know, the asphalt in the roads dropping about, you know, four-plus inches to the gutters and then uneven curbs and sidewalks. And I know years ago, we were talking about trying to make those kinds of improvements, and, you know, and they're expensive to make, but I'm wondering if Public Works is involved in some of this coordination.
Yes, so I, I work for Public Works.
Yeah, I meant to, you know, engineering and whatnot.
Additional effort to do an ADA transition plan, so I think the first step is just doing asset management, where are our sidewalks currently at, and that's one of the questions we're answering. So that's the first step into seeing, like, how and where do we need these sidewalk improvements? So I hope that answers your question.
No, it does.
Okay.
And I, you know, and I, I'm an engineer, so I work with Tom Grundy and them quite a bit on other things, but I know I've been thinking about reaching out to him and talking to him about exactly this, so this is pretty timely for me. And then in terms of route maps or anything, do we have?
Dirk Goring is the lead on the sidewalks ADA transition. I can definitely share his contact with you.
I have his contact, so I can reach out to him. And then just mapping in general, what kind of mapping do we have, if any, for our citizens, and are we kind of eventually going to have something, whether it's online or paper copies for people to pick up and go, let's say my kid does ride a bicycle to school or walks home, you know, kind of a preferred route for them to go?
I agree, and that's definitely something I would love to do. MapGeo right now has most of our shape files, and you can see what future classes we have on there, so you can see, we have a Trails and Pathways layer that you can pull up and access. Right now, we are updating it and working with Muscle Powered to kind of fill in some of the gaps and the missing links inside the, the data collection. In terms of like a walk and bike to school map, that's definitely an idea that I tossed out there, and it is one of the actions inside the plan. So I'm hoping once we do do that holistic asset management, that we can start providing resources like that for schools, so they know what safe route to take, purpose of the program, and how long it will take. So one mile takes about 20 minutes to walk, and I know in Carson City, it's about, we have a two-mile walk zone, and that's, it's a pretty far walk. You're welcome. Thank you for the questions. Are there any other additional questions?
Any other questions for Ms. Moffett? Seeing none, thank you so much for coming, we look forward to seeing your report. Moving on to number nine, discussion and possible action to approve the newly proposed CCSD Policy 1025, prohibition of workforce violence, second reading for possible action. Mr. Delphin, Dr. Delphin.
Thank you, Presidents Wilkey and Trustees, Jose Delphin for the record. Just want to start out with doing a shout-out to a thanks for our Carson City staffer who is filming us this evening, our custodial staff here at Carson High School, and of course Renee. It's always a feat to get this place wired up and ready to go. So I'm here tonight, I'm pinch-hitting for Mrs. Seer because she's feeling under the weather, and so based on our agenda this evening, Policy 1025 is about our second reading for the prohibition of workplace violence. I know that we discussed it just not too far ago, so I'm here to take any comments, suggestions.
I just have a grammatical change to make, so before the "which," I would delete the comma and add "and," because those two clauses modify the environment, and the environment is the subject of what is vital, so that's why I would do that.
Roger that. Thank you.
Any other changes or comments? Looking for a motion? Joe?
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve January 22nd, 2019 as the adopted date for newly proposed CCSD Policy 1025, prohibition of workplace violence.
One second.
Richard just pointed out to me, the second paragraph, reflect the commitment to providing to employees, students, visitors, a safe environment. I think we could get rid of the second "to," to providing employees, students, visitors, and visitors a safe and secure environment that is free. This commitment to providing employees rather than the second, to providing "to." So if we can modify the motion to include that.
Yeah, I would like to modify my motion to take into account the suggestions made by the board this evening.
Second by Don. Any other discussion? Any public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor?
All right.
All those opposed? And it passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms., Dr. Delphin. Moving on to number 10, discussion on proposed changes to CCSD Regulation 1020, protocol in suspended, suspected cases of child abuse or neglect, and newly proposed Appendix 5, Talking to Children/Students About Abuse or Neglect, for discussion only. Mrs. Kima.
Susan Kima for the record. Policy and regulation 1020 went through a major revision, revision the summer of 2017. Now that the Department of Child and Family Services, our district staff, our school resource officers have worked with the officers have worked with the policy, they had a few additional changes for not the policy itself, but for the regulation that would provide those who need to utilize it with a little bit clearer information. So if you look on page five, number eight was added. They wanted to make sure that if the mandatory mandated reporter had reasonable suspicion that the child will be endangered upon the child's return home from school that day, that they make sure that when they call this into DCFS or they call it into Carson City Sheriff's Department, that they make sure that they mention that, that they say that, that they're concerned, because that could expedite support for that child. And then the other area of change was DCFS came out to the district and trained our principals on how to talk to children and students about abuse or neglect, and making sure that we don't lead them down a path, making sure that we're very, that we follow the protocol. And they felt strongly enough to add it in the appendix so that it was, you know, for training purposes, we didn't forget about talking about that part. So those were the changes. This was, like I said, quite an overhaul that summer of 2017. Then when you work with something like this, you don't know how many more changes you need. So after a year, this wasn't too bad.
Okay. I just have a question. I'm not, I don't have any issues with the new additions to it, but I had a question on page four, under the steps that a staff contractor or volunteer will make. First is to gather information and second is to telephone the agency. And I'm just wondering, do we want that staff to maybe talk to the site administrator before they make the telephone call or do, because it seems like that might be, is that part of the gathering information or is this the way the statute outlines the steps that they should take? And it just seems like you don't, just I had a kid who told a PE teacher his dad hit him on the head with a remote control and that's why he had a big bump on his head. And it turned out his dad actually was going, "Go to bed, go to bed, go to bed," with each of the kids. And a substitute PE teacher was very concerned. And the principal said, "It's okay. It's not." So I just wonder about those type of situations, if that's something where you can have staff members talk with the school site before?
Yes. They can...
I don't want them to feel like they have to make the phone call maybe before they talk to somebody else at the school, I guess.
Well, yes, that's part of that relationship with their site administrator, with what's going on. I know that the mandated reporter has the right to call...
Right away.
Right away. It's courtesy to make sure that they let the building administrator know what's going on so that law enforcement or DCFS doesn't show up at the school and you don't know why they're walking in your doors. There are other times when that occurs, you know, that things are happening and they're looking for somebody at the school. But in a case like this, you described, they should talk with the administrator. And so you're looking for a different place to put it. I need to go back through because I know it does talk about... So C number five, it's in there. Due to the nature of their positions, school counselors, social workers, psychologists, nurses may be able to assist with that, making the reports.
Maybe the mandatory reporter isn't, you know, required to report to the principal first. It just seems like that would be a logical first step though, before you make a phone call. But maybe that's not what the statute requires and...
I can't believe with all this work, Mike, that we would have missed something like that.
You know, one of the things I wonder about is, you know, sometimes people think that if they tell the site administrator, it takes the responsibility away from themselves and as a mandatory reporter, I wouldn't want to blur the lines because they are still required to report that even if they tell the site administrator. And so I think we want to be careful that we don't put too much information on the which would kind of muddy the waters.
And that was a big piece of our training because staff members, even when I, you know, when I was a principal, staff members would want to give me the information because I was in charge of that school. And it's their responsibility to report what they heard, what they saw, what they witnessed, what they were told. And so that was really something that we wanted to make sure was clear in here, that it's the mandatory reporter that has the responsibility.
That's right.
And I would think trust and respect for your school leader to kind of let them know, hey, heads up. Or if they're uncertain, just connect with them, but they're responsible for the reporting, not the principal.
Thank you.
I have a question. Go ahead.
Just on page three, under subparagraph D, the staff is required to report to the site principal. You don't want to have the report to the principal to cause a delay in reporting to
I'm just wondering, on page three, section C, subparagraph D, I guess, that's where you say that a report may be made to the site principal. But I'm just wondering if you need to put something in there if the site principal's not available on extended leave, maybe site principal or designated, or something along those lines. So where if the principal's not available, they have somebody else to go to or they know who to make the report to?
Administrator.
You can do that.
Okay. And then I have another question on C, where it says a report may be made to the Department of Social Services or Washoe Tribal Police for a child who may be living in tribal land. Should that be maybe and, or if you just reported to the Department of Social Services, have they made a commitment to report it to the Washoe Tribal Police? It's on the very bottom, very last sentence.
Oh, you're looking at E?
Yeah, I'm sorry, E. I probably said C because it looks like a C to me, I can't see. Because it says or...
When we worked with the tribal police on this, they were, and their social services, they were very clear that we need to report to them. They all report, talk to each other.
Right.
They said the mandatory reporter needs to report to them.
Then maybe we should put and instead of or?
Yeah, it should be and. Department of Social Services and tribal police.
Well, I guess my question is, because the tribal police are, they handle their own, they're sovereign, so wouldn't it be, it would depend, you would go to social services for some students, but if it was some, if somebody a tribe member, then you would go to the tribal police?
Yeah, if they're living on tribal land, it should be reported to the tribal police. Now, there's going to be some students who are Native American who do not live on tribal lands naturally, but the ones that do, which I think this is trying to address here, the ones that who do live on tribal lands.
Can you check the statute?
Yes, we'll check the statute on this one. Because they too, when I'm looking at this Department of Social Services or Washoe Tribal Police, this is addressing the Department of Social Services for the Washoe Tribe. I think if we're talking about DCFS, we would have said DCFS here.
Well, maybe we could clarify then, the Washoe Tribe Department of Social Services and...
It would be of. I don't think it's, they have both. They do have both.
Yeah, they do have both.
They do have both. And I'll look at the, I'll look at our forms that we have in the appendix for this and we'll, I'll give you a call, Mike, on this and we'll take a look.
Yeah, I think it could be clarified very easily then if that was the intent, just to say the Washoe Tribe Department of Social Services.
Anything else?
Any other comments or changes from the board?
I have one more.
Okay, go ahead.
On page four, paragraph number four, I'm wondering if, I have a note here, if you don't mind, let me look at it. I know the statute said that it's just, you make the report as soon as possible, but I think in another area here, you put that there to be reported, the site principal within 24 hours. Do we want to be consistent? Because I know the statute doesn't do a timeframe, it just says it's...
Practical.
Practical or something.
Which is why that's written there and is, the report to the principal is district policy.
Within 24 hours?
Is district.
Right.
It's not a required piece in the law.
Right, yeah, I understand that.
But we want it to, principal, that's part of what trustee Crossman was talking about and making sure that we, these folks communicate it with their administrator.
Anyone else? Sue, what kind of training do we have for the volunteers to know what's in here? Do we have any, I know we don't. When I was back in the day, we didn't have any formal training. Do we have that now?
I would have to defer to Dr. Delphin on that. I don't know if we have anything online that they have to do or something they sign off on or...
Yeah, Mrs. Kima, I can tell you that we don't cover this with our volunteers. We probably should, Mrs. Wilkie. I know that Mrs. Seer is developing a voluntary, volunteer handbook, which hopefully will come together sometime this year and I'll make sure that we add, I'm sure it's in there already, but we'll add it in there.
Hey, just for your information, after the board approved the regular policy, we went around to the bus drivers, cook, bakers, custodians, all the teachers were trained, administrators were trained. So we did a roadshow on the training of this particular policy.
Good to hear. Since there weren't so many changes, maybe we can have this come back for a second reading after we make some of these changes, the boards. Seeing no other discussion, we'll go on and move on to number 11, presentation of the superintendent on the state of the district, informal informational overview for the Carson City School District for the 2017-2018 year for discussion only.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board, for the record, Richard Stokes. It's my privilege to be your superintendent. I want you to know that, just right out of the shoots here. I feel very fortunate to have not only trustees who are so supportive, but also just wonderful staff who are very knowledgeable and dedicated and hardworking. So the format that I've used in the past, you will recognize, tonight's presentation looks very much the same. We've tried to encapsulate some of the information from other years so that you'll have a baseline and can also see some comparison here in some of our numbers. Just in front of you, you have something that should look very familiar, the fundamental vision statement of our district, and then the five basic goals of our strategic plan. You know, I've seen a lot of strategic goals and plans in my day, and the thing that I like about ours is it's really straightforward. It's not, it's not so big and so wordy that people get lost in all the details. So I'm very appreciative of the work that we're doing along these lines. For your information, this slide shows the number of schools that we have, including our affiliation with Carson Montessori School, which is a charter school. And also, as you know, they have their own governing board and consequently don't follow all the rules, regulations, and policies that we have. You'll see that our student enrollment is moving upward, but not at an extremely high rate. And we did lose students during the first several years of the Great Recession, which is starting to make its way back now. This shows the comparison of special programs in the school district and also the ethnicity of our schools. I've always thought that the ethnic makeup of our community is likely to be reflected in our schools as well. And I think you will probably agree, the number of students in our special programs seem to be climbing and our other numbers seem to be holding relatively steady. So just for clarity, IEP stands for Individual Education Programs, LEP stands for Limited English Proficient, or those are our English learners, and FRL stands for Free and Reduced I put this slide in so that you could see how Carson stacks up against the two largest school districts in the state and also our neighbor immediately to the south. I don't know if you have any questions about this particular slide, but I think it shows that in general, our numbers are fairly close to what some of the large school districts in the state look like and also represent some of the challenges that we face or some of these other districts face as well. This slide shows a little bit about how we've progressed in the last several years with regard to employment and numbers. Carson City School District, by one source that I recently read, is the largest employer in Carson City. So the school district is the largest employer. And we're nearing 1,000 full-time staff members and we exceed 1,000 if you look at our temporary employees, or those who don't work full-time. The difference in the classified staff, if it has the 12 there in parentheses, that number represents staff members who are classified, who work 12 months out of the year. And then we also have a large number of classified staff who do not. And those would be employees who are affiliated directly with the school year, maybe paraprofessionals. There's likely to be school bus drivers and other individuals who are not required to work year-round. Transient C represents the number of students who start out at one school within the district and maybe move to another school. This number has consistently dropped in our school district. And as you can see, the number is smaller when compared to the number of students who are transient within the state of Nevada. As you can imagine, the concept of transients C challenges the academic programs for students. And one of the things that we really tried over time to do is to unify our curriculum so that if a student does, for example, start their school year at Seliger and then move to the Mark Twain Attendance Zone, that there's less of a likelihood that that student will have some gap because, or at least a gap that is attributed to differences in curriculum. And that's district-wide, we've been attempting, that was a major and fundamental tenet of our Race to the Top program. And of course, as we're working with new materials and all of those things, an important part of the work that our implementation specialists do is to make sure that our curriculum is guaranteed and unified. This statistic shows that we are kind of right in the hunt in terms of the attendance of our students in comparison to the state. And this is a number that shows the number of, or at least that's attributed to the average daily attendance for teachers. And over time, this has always been one of those things where we tend to use a little more... of our leave time in comparison with the rest of the state. Now that we have had the discussions with all of our schools, and you should note too that this comparison in proficiency exams for the elementary and the middle school, these are last year's numbers, this year's testing season will occur this spring, and so it won't be until our next accountability report that we'll be able to compare new data against what we have. And so the top numbers, well, it's labeled there, you can see where we've got the state averages for English Language Arts and also math in comparison to our district numbers. We obviously have some work to do here, and we, in providing some of the school plans with the board this fall and also this winter, all of those efforts are aimed at increasing our student proficiencies. We're also seeing a growth, a consistent growth in our graduation rate, and this chart shows it in comparison to several years ago. And again, we're seeing, I think, the fruits of our labors as we are focusing on instruction. We're not being content to leaving students who have holes in their education to fend for themselves, so every student really is important, and I believe that's being shown as our graduation rates are increasing over the years. This number, or at least this slide rather, shows the state averages for 2017, 2018, and then it shows our district numbers, so these are combined numbers that represent both Carson High School and also Pioneer High School. And again, these numbers are going in the right direction, but we're also expecting those numbers to grow as our students become more acquainted with the exam, as the rigor increases in our schools, and as our efforts to provide as many resources as possible to our students and also to our teachers increase. Any questions about any of these things that you've seen so far? I know that you're very familiar with our workings, but this is intended to try to bring into focus trends and conditions, operations that are going on within our school district. It seems that one of the main focuses of the upcoming legislative session, as it has been for a number of years, is around our per pupil basic support. This shows a little bit as to the increases and the decreases that have occurred over time in our per pupil amount, and pretty straightforward calculations show that we are probably not keeping up with fundamental inflation, as you compare these numbers against our operations every year. And as you can imagine, not only do we have increasing student numbers, we also have operations, we have utilities, we have employee contracts and obligations that have been negotiated, so the cost of doing business continues to rise. Unfortunately, we're not seeing huge increases in our per pupil basic support, and we will hope that this particular concept is addressed during the next legislative session. These next data points are from the Nevada Report Card, so this information's available on the Department of Education's webpage, these are also available, at least the current numbers are available through our own webpage, and the description that identifies what instruction means. Please note that these numbers represent the general fund of the school district, and the percentage of those, of the general fund that's used to provide basic instruction for students. So in this particular category, our teachers are probably the main source of the cost that is expended towards providing instruction, and you can see here that we're a little shy of what the state average is, but right in the hunt, again, in terms of what's being spent in other school districts around the state. Instructional support represents general fund expenditures that does just that, supports education, or instruction, I should say, so some of the costs that might be affiliated with this group would be any of our support staff, supplies, and support staff could be our IT folks, it could be nurses, it could be paraprofessionals and that type of category of staff member. And here you can see that, as has been really the condition over time, we continue to outspend in this particular area for our students, that is, to support everything that I've just talked about in terms of those staff members who are hired to support instruction. Operations, traditionally, we have been under the state average, and some of this has been based on some of the good work done by Mr. Cornick and his staff as we implement green and sustainable methods. Obviously, we have a large number of solar panels, which are used to offset some of our other utility costs, and another thing that adds to this, I believe, is the fact that we're in distance, a fairly compact school district. We don't have to travel long distances to pick up or deliver our students, and we're also relatively close by to other schools our size, where we may have activities such as athletics, band trips, those kinds of things. So in terms of operations, we've always been slightly less than the state. And from a perspective of leadership, I know, and I hear it all the time, and I know you folks do too, you have too many overpaid administrators at the top of the organization. Here you can see that consistently, the Carson City School District has been under the state average in terms of expenditures for leadership, and again, this is a general fund dollar As has been mentioned, and you know, we always try to have comfortable, well-maintained, efficient buildings that are in good repair for not only our students to attend schooling, but also for our staff members to work in. And as we continue on with the projects that have been slated for Pioneer, Mark Twain, and Fremont, one of the important aspects of two of those sites was to remove the portable buildings, which has been done, and then on the flip side of that, to build or remodel with permanent buildings or permanent structures, the additional regular and specialized classrooms that will be added to these buildings. And of course, as we continue on, especially looking at Carson City, and the growth that's happening, or at least is planned to happen at some of the different developments in town, of course, we'll have to be agile and be using our money in a wise way, so that we can continue to build and provide classroom space and places for staff to work as we continue on. So part of this will also include projections on growth. I know Mr. Feeling has recently received a study that was done for us to try and look and see how many students might be coming our way as a result of current growth in the community, and what that means in translation to actual classrooms needed, and that's been very helpful as we continue to do this work, study whether or not we'll need to modify attendance zones and/or add either new classrooms or new schools to meet the needs of the school district in the future. And from my desk, these are the things that are important as we continue our work. We will use the strategic plan as our guide and continue to update it as is called for by the plan itself. We know that for us to get better, our students and our staff members must increase that academic rigor, we want nothing more than to be at the top of the heap as it applies to completion of the pre-K to 12 education, and to prepare all of our students for their place in the world. We will move forward and always allocate the time, the resources, and the materials for our staff and our students to have the kind of academic support they need. We know that it's also a condition that we've experienced and continue to experience, where we have staff members that struggle with initiative difficulties. If we ask them to do too much, something has to give, and so we're always looking to find that razor's edge where we can continue to work in such a way that our people are being successful, but they're not feeling overwhelmed. Of course, we feel like we have done a good job, and we'll continue to do a good job across the school district as we try to make sure that we have the budget. We appreciate your support and your input in guiding us in our budget assumptions, and of course, we want to be in a place where we are always able to move forward and to be conservative in all those budget assumptions, so that we can continue to do the work that is ours to do. And then, of course, we just mentioned already a little bit about our capital projects and some of the growth conditions that we're facing. So in a nutshell, again, very happy to be affiliated with the district, and at this point, I would say that's the end of my presentation formally. Do you have any questions for me, or things that I might be able to turn to staff for assistance?
Any questions?
Asking.
Richard?
I don't know if it's so much a question as an observation. Looks like from 2017 to 2018, we gained 168 students, if my math is right, and we employed another 34 teachers during that same period of time, according to the figures here. I'm just wondering, where are those 34 certified, I'm assuming they're teachers, where were they allocated, or where are they working now?
So our organization has expanded over time, and so while in some of those last slides, I talked specifically about the general fund, we also have been very successful in our school district in writing grants for new dollars that have been made available by the Department of Education, the state of Nevada, through the legislature, and so we have employed some specialists, you saw some here this evening, that assist us all in implementing some of the work that we're being asked to do. And so a lot of those additional staff members don't necessarily represent teachers in front of students, but they do represent teachers in other assignments that are also important to our operation.
Out of those 34, how many went in the classroom?
I don't know if I have that right in front of me. Sorry? 20, two zero? Okay. We can try to hone that number down a little bit for you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anybody else with any questions?
Okay. How recent is this, are these percentages on the ethnicity and special programs?
Those are from our 2018 accountability report, so those are numbers from the 2017-2018 school year.
Okay, thank you.
So, Mr. Stokes, I just want to say thanks to you and Mr. Feeling for staying on top of the projected growth, because that's one of the things I'm really worried about is if we do have an influx of students, I mean, I know our schools are pretty full or at capacity in a lot of cases, and so with the price of building a new school or new projects, that concerns me, so I appreciate your guys' efforts with that, working with the developers and kind of keeping a surprise of what's coming down the road.
Thank you, Mr. Walker, we wish the picture were more clear, but there, it is, and you're exactly right, a big concern. Anybody who's been in our buildings when school is on will know that our schools are full.
Just a question on the average daily attendance of students, because that's so important, it's such a push that all the schools are doing is working to improve their attendance, and then I'm just concerned that our teachers' average daily attendance is below the students, and so what are we looking at doing, or is there any area of different staff members that we can attribute that decreased attendance to, or what are we doing to improve our teachers' daily attendance?
Well, that's the challenge, for sure. This number does not represent time lost in the classroom due to professional development, so this is time that teachers have, and if you think about it like a bank account, teachers can use up to five days of personal leave each day, that's part of their contractual benefit, and then they're given 15 sick leave days each year, which also can accumulate over time, and in some cases, it's very helpful. If teachers have some kind of a catastrophic illness, then they do have sick leave that keeps them not only in a salaried position, but it also gives them the ability to keep and hold on to their insurance if they do have some sort of catastrophic illness. We do have an issue though, and I would like to see our numbers crawl up there a little closer to what the state average is, but we have not implemented anything as a district that formally addresses this, but we are open to suggestions.
So, Mr. Stokes, if I can add that, with former presentations of the Vera Care Center for our staff, we currently are in partnership with Prominent, so that the Vera Clinic, if you will, has a 360 model of health care for our staff members. So you can go into the care center for your regular primary if you want, or urgent care, but they also provide health coaches within their staff. The health coaches will be in place in March. We have a facility that is being built off of where the old Salvation Army building is, or was, I should say, right on Winnie, and I'm really excited about the Vera Care Center, because I believe it will help our staff become healthier and form healthy habits, and so that 360 care will, I believe, be beneficial. When I looked at the Seattle model for health care in that city, it proved to be of a great benefit to the staff members that I spoke to up there. So I believe over time that we'll be able to manage any health needs, whether it's socio, emotional, or health, be able to take care of our staff as much as we try to take care of our students. So that's my effort, my office, to do that.
Dr. Delphin and Mr. Stokes, it's just a question, I'm curious, as I understand it, and I could be wrong, so let me know, but if we have a teacher, let's say, who has a dentist appointment one day, and they have to be gone for a certain period of time... period of time, they typically wind up having to take the whole day, because to put a sub in the classroom, you got to pay the sub for the whole day, or, I'm wondering if that's kind of what we have to do, and is that typical throughout the state?
I don't know what it's like across the state, trustee Cassioppo, but I know that they can split the day in half. So we do have half-day subs to go in. But I do see, you know, if folks are strategic, they're trying to take care of all their appointments in one day, to make it a full day, unless it's obviously unavoidable. And we are in flu season, so we're seeing a big spike in absenteeism as we're all snuffling some week or some days.
Thank you, Mr. Delfin. Any other questions?
Madam President, I would just ask, when I prepare these things, which is usually an annual event, if you have items or things that you would like me to focus on or to prepare in a different way, I would love that feedback and look forward to preparing that in the future.
So if you have any comments or feedback, please email Mr. Stokes and let him know. Thank you, Mr. Stokes. Moving on to agenda item number 12, approval of the consent agenda for possible action.
I noticed in my review, I have an item within the consent agenda, and since I have a pecuniary interest, I'm going to abstain from the vote. I'll make a motion.
A motion by Laurel, second by Lupe. Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion passes. Moving on to 13, informational items. As you can see, reminded that the Bond Oversight Committee is Thursday at 11:30. We have an early release day on the 28th, and professional development on the 4th. Any comments on those? Seeing none, moving on to number 14, request for future agenda items. Does anybody have something they'd like to put on a future agenda? Okay, seeing none, then we are adjourned before 8:30. Thank you all for coming, and thank you to the Carson High staff for setting this up. We appreciate it.